Wait a minute, I can get my notes out here. Give him a chance to...
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The October 23rd, 2025 meeting of the Medford Planning Commission will now come to order. Kaylee, can we have a roll call, please?
Rachel Bennett.
Here.
Larry Besko.
Here.
David Colbertson.
Here.
Mark McKechnie.
Here.
EJ McManus. Jared Pulver.
Here.
Jeff Thomas.
Here.
And Jim Wallen.
Yes.
Rule has been taken.
Thank you, and we have a quorum. Tonight's agenda is available on the city's website for those watching from home. The order of business this evening will consent to consist of consent calendar and written communications, minutes, public hearings, and reports. Item 20 is the consent calendar and written communications. Have commissioners reviewed the consent calendar and written communications, and if so, are there any questions? Okay, seeing none, can we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the consent calendar and written communications as submitted.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Kaylee, can we have a roll call, please?
Rachel Bennett.
Yes.
Larry Besko.
Yes.
David Colbertson.
Yes.
Jared Pulver.
Yes.
Jeff Thomas.
Yes.
Jim Wallen.
Yes.
Mark McKechnie.
Yes.
We have seven yeses.
Thank you, the motion passes. Item 30 is the minutes. Have commissioners reviewed the minutes from the planning commission meeting of October 9th, 2025? And if so, are there any additions or corrections to be noted? All right, seeing none, the minutes will stand as submitted. Item 40 is oral requests and communications from the audience. This is an opportunity for members of the audience to address the commission on matters that are not on tonight's agenda. If you wish to speak, please come forward to the podium, sign in, and tell us your name and your concern. Okay, not seeing anybody, we'll move on to public hearings. Items 50.1 and 50.5 through 50.7 will be conducted as legislative hearings. Item 50.2 through 50.4 will be conducted as quasi-judicial hearings. If you plan to testify this evening, please listen carefully to the following prepared statement regarding the procedural rules that govern these hearings. The statement will be read by Mr. Alan Moreland, Deputy City Attorney.
I'm going to explain the rules that govern these hearings. Before the hearing begins, city staff will give a report. The report will list the criteria that govern the city's decision. After the staff report, the hearing will be open for other speakers. The applicant will speak first and may ask for rebuttal time. Following the applicant, any other interested person will be allowed to speak. Any testimony, argument, or evidence you give must relate to the criteria listed in the staff report, or other criteria in the comprehensive plan, or land use regulations that you believe apply to the decision. If you fail to raise an issue, or do not give the commission sufficient information so that the commission and any party can respond, you will not be able to appeal that issue to the Land Use Board of Appeals. If you don't do not raise constitutional or other issues about any proposed condition with specificity so that the commission can respond to that issue, you will not be able to bring a court action for damages. Before the hearing is closed, anyone who needs more time to present evidence must ask for more time. If you ask, the hearing will be continued, or the record will be kept open, and you will have at least seven days to present additional written evidence.
Thank you. In order to proceed through this evening's agenda, applicants will be given 10 minutes to present their application. Members of the audience that wish to talk about these will be given three minutes to state their information, or five minutes if they are representing a group or organization. Close enough? Okay, all right. With that, let's move on to item 50.1, CP-25-222, a legislative amendment to the economic element and goals, policies, and implementation strategies section of the Medford Comprehensive Plan to incorporate the updated economic opportunity analysis and related goals and policies. The applicant agent is the city of Medford, the planner is Carla Angeli Palladino, and the applicant has requested to continue this item to the February 26th, 2026 Planning Commission meeting. If there is anyone in the audience that has come to testify on this agenda item and cannot make the February 26th, 2026 meeting, please come forward, and the Planning Commission will hear your testimony at this time. Please keep in mind, however, that the questions, your questions may be answered at the February 26th meeting. There will be no decisions made this evening on this agenda item. With that said, is there anyone that wishes to come forward and speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, can we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to continue CP-25-222 to the February 26th, 2026 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Kaylee, can we have a roll call, please?
Jim Wallen.
Yes.
Larry Besko.
Yes.
David Colbertson.
Yes.
Rachel Bennett.
Yes.
Jared Pulver.
Yes.
Jeff Thomas.
Yes.
Mark McKechnie.
Yes.
We have seven yeses.
Thank you, motion passes. Agenda item 50.2, ZC-25-226, LDS-25-227, consideration of Maple Park subdivision, a proposed 12-lot residential subdivision, along with the zone change of the property from SFR-00 to SFR-10. The property consists of a single parcel developed with a single-family residence and totaling approximately 1.57 acres, located at the northwest corner of Nicholas Lee Drive and Maple Park Drive. The applicant is Esteban Gonzalez Duran, the agent is Richard Stevens and Associates, Inc., the planner is Dustin Severs. Does any commissioner have a conflict of interest or ex parte contact to disclose regarding this application? Seeing none, does anyone in attendance wish to question the commission as to conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts? Seeing none on that. Dustin, can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Dustin Severs of the Planning Department, and I'll be presenting a staff report for the Maple Park subdivisions, both a land division and a zone change. So a bit of history, I'm sure you all understand at this point why we're here this evening. So this this matter was heard at our September 25th meeting, and the motion to approve the land division was denied. Staff did cite some procedural issues, the action that was taken at that hearing, and on the screen here you see the applicant's agent did provide a letter that was provided for the October 9th hearing requesting, he identified some of these procedural issues and respectfully requested that you rehear the hearing that would be continued to the October 23rd hearing. Staff was supportive of that request, and you did honor that request and went ahead and voted to continue it to for this night. Looking at our legal requirements, our land division criteria are found in Section 10.2025. While the zone change criteria summarized on the screen here are located in Section 10.204 of the Land Development Code, and are also included in your staff reports. So looking at our project summary, so the site consists of a single parcel, totals approx. 1.57 acres, and as you can see is developed with a single-family home, which is supposed to be demolished with the proposed development. The site does have two street frontages, along its southerly boundary is Maple Park Drive, which is classified as a standard residential street, and along its easterly boundary is Nicholas Lee Drive, which is classified as a minor residential street. Surrounding area you can see is all single-family residential. You see the property is served by a gravel, little turnaround driveway. Here's an image of the subject site looking north from Maple Park Drive. And our next image is looking from Nicholas Lee, south, at the subject site and the existing building. Site's general land use plan designation is urban residential. Its zoning is SFR-00, as you know, is our holding zone that we apply to sites when they come, when they get annexed into the city from the county, and remain SFR-00 until they go through a zone change, at which time we look at facility adequacy, as one of the applications we have tonight is to change the zoning to SFR-10. Site's also in our airport area concern, as is much of the, much of properties in the city. And the proposal is for Maple Park subdivisions, a proposed 12-lot residential subdivision along that zone change from SFR-00 to SFR-10. So we have two applications, I'll look at each of these in turn. First, we'll look at the land division application. So again, the applicant is proposing a 12-lot subdivision. First, we'll look at density, so the commission can find that 12 lots does fall within the minimum maximum range for the, based on the size of lot and its zoning of SFR-10. Next, we'll look at our land division standards, so the commission can find that all the dimensional standards are met with all 12 lots, and that's with the lot area with depth and frontage. Three of the lots, lots 12, five, was it four, and, uh, three of the lots, as highlighted here, are proposed as corner lots, so they do have that additional 10 feet required for the width, and do meet that that standard. And Lot 9 is proposed, even though it meets our dimensional standards for the zone, it is proposed as a pond, stormwater pond. Images here show the culvert pipe which runs on Nipple, on to the south and runs north through the, through the site. So the lots 1 through 4 along the southerly boundary will all take access off a public street, while the remaining lots will take access off a, a proposed major minimum access easement. A little bit of overview, we have two types of minimum access easement. We have a minor minimum access easement shown on the left. So this is a driveway which serves a minimum of two, a maximum of three dwelling units, and that's not including accessory dwelling units. And then we also have a major minimum access easement, it's similar to a minor, however, it does allow four up to eight, a minimum of four and a maximum of eight, and same thing, it also excludes accessory dwelling units in those numbers. Looking at the cross-sections, they're similar with as if the major minimum access easement does have the five-foot sidewalk and also allows for some on-street parking on one side of this, of the private drive. So the applicant is proposing a major minimum access easement, again, they are limited to, to eight, they can take access, so discounting the stormwater facility lot, they're proposing seven lots to take access off this, this major minimum access easement. It was reviewed by the fire department, had no issues with this in terms of turnaround, having access for their, for their vehicles. So this, uh, let me go back, so this was the main issue raised at our previous hearing on September 25th, so some of those in the commission, it was, it was the review that minimum access easement wasn't appropriate in this site, but it'd be more appropriate to have a public street. Staff, however, was supportive of the applicant's request for the minimum access easement for a couple of reasons. At first, it does meet block lane standards, as included in this, in the staff report provided by the Public Works Department, they take no issue with the proposed minimum access easement, as again, so it is not a requirement to have a public street. Of course, it does not mean that we cannot require a public street to serve the development. And saying that, per Section 10.450, it says that cul-de-sacs, flag locks, as well as minimum access easements, they are discretionary matters, and they, they are required to be approved by this body. They do have to meet one of the three criteria listed on, on the screen here. So we did, in our staff report, we did Site A, which mentions that there is existing developments to the west of the property, which would inhibit a street from being extended from Nicholas Street, Nicholas Lee Drive to Ross, North Ross Lane. So moving along, we're looking at our zone change, now we'll have to look at the zone changes, pretty straightforward, and it is SFR-00, which is our holding zone, so the request is to change it to SFR-10. So the SFR-10 zone is allowed in the UR GLUP designation. It also abus SFR-10, which is a locational criteria for a zone change to SFR-10. And finally, all the staff reports we received from the water commission, fire department, public works, and please Rogue Valley Sewer Service, facilities will be adequate to serve the property at future developments. All those can, criteria are satisfied for the zone change. So that, with that, I'll move to the findings and recommendations. Staff has reviewed the applicant's findings and conclusions. We recommend to the commission adopt the findings as submitted. And we ask you to adopt the applicant's findings and adopt the final orders for approval of the land division and the zone change, and that's per the staff report dated October 16th, 2025, exclude, includes, exists A 1 through O. And we're also, they, ask that you approve for, for the subdivision to include the creation of a major minimum access in lieu of a public street, and that's per Section 10.450-1. And with that, I can take questions, thank you. We also have had Mr. Doug Burrows here, if you have the questions related to the streets or infrastructure.
Thank you, Dustin. Any questions? I have a procedural question. So we had a, a public hearing on this a couple of meetings ago, and where testimony was given. Are we allowed to refer to that testimony?
Yes, so I'm glad that you asked that question. I was, so I think five of the seven of you that are here this evening attended the September 25th meeting. I think Mr. Besko, Mr. Colbertson, you weren't in attendance. So in order to participate, I would ask if you had the opportunity to review the, the recording of the meeting and the record.
I did, both.
I also reviewed the meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. So since you've participated and are aware of all the testimony and, and what happened prior, so, yes, so you can consider what happened at the September 25th meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Dustin, just, I just wanted to be clear, I didn't maybe catch it before, but so the applicant's proposing a major, um, so it's, so even though the term minimum access easement shows up, there's a major minimum access easement, so there's a minimum access easement, not, sort of applicable here, but in the terms of a major minimum access easement?
Yes, it's a little confusing. So the, the minor allows for up to four, and this allows up to, to eight.
So it's, oh, it's a minor minimum access easement and a major?
And a major minimum access easement.
I just wanted to make sure what league I was playing in, so that's great, thank you.
All right, then we, with that, we will open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward and talk about the project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. For the record, my name is Clark Stevens with Richard Stevens and Associates. We're located at 244 South Grape Street here in Medford, Oregon, and we're representing Mr. Esteban Duran with this zone change application and subdivision for Maple Park subdivision. I want to thank you for reopening this public hearing so we can clarify some of the issues. Staff has done an excellent job with their revised staff report, demonstrating that towards the west, we have existing residential development, which is a hindrance if we were to propose a public street towards the west. So that was one of the purposes of proposing the minimum access easement, a major minimum access easement for the development of this site. As was reflected in the, one of the slides there, those two lots towards the west are .30 acres in size. They are almost a single-family lot as they exist today. They both contain a single-family dwelling, so we are consistent with Section 10.450 for infill projects and proposing a major minimum access easement. Another benefit for proposing this is the wetlands and the storm drainage for Little Elk Creek that traverses along our western boundary. It just keeps the ditch open and keeps the water flowing through the project site. This also enhances the development of the subject property in that we can put in additional lots without a full-blown cul-de-sac or proposed duplexes. This project is for, is planned for single-family development to provide more housing opportunities for the first-time homebuyer within the city of Medford. And as staff has mentioned, we are in compliance with Section 10.204 for the zone change. We meet all the locational criteria, and we are also in, in compliance with Section 10.202 for the subdivision of this project, meeting all the density requirements and area requirements. With that, I'll be happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Any ques, yes?
Good evening. I think one of the concerns that was raised at the last hearing of this application was the width of the easement, and how if it, if that private road were widened further than it's currently mapped, the lots would have to be decreased, and, and
Correct.
They're already at a size where that's not really feasible for a single-family detached dwelling on those lots.
That's correct.
If those, and this is purely academic, if those lots were developed as duplexes, would the road be able to be widened such that it could be a public street?
I would say it would probably be a hundred percent duplex project to meet the minimum density.
All 12 lots then would be?
Well, you would, you're gonna have probably six to eight lots at that point because of the width standards, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Laura, do you have a comment?
No.
Oh, you do, okay.
And I know this was asked at the last meeting, but just reiterate, the, what type of agreement will you have so that the seven lots that share the driveway are gonna all share in the maintenance to make sure that occurs?
Right, those are prepared by the applicant's attorney that gets reviewed by Public Works, so that's, the easements and the maintenance agreements are built, all built in. It's very similar to a private road standard because it's maintained by those property owners. It's an easement, but this is actually, you know, it's very similar to a private road, but it's the same type of documents to be assured that this maintains in a suitable area. So those are all prepared by the attorney.
Is he doing a HOA, or, or is he just gonna do an agreement that, that each homeowner has to sign off on?
I believe there is no HOA at this point in time. We're trying not to do that, so it'll be strictly straight easements for those lots to be served.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, comments down here?
Okay, so I just need you to walk me through it, 'cause I'm, I tried to understand how the easement works, that helped a little bit with, so there's an agreement with seven of the 12 lots?
Correct.
Okay, but everybody accesses their, through the easement, is that correct or not?
Correct.
Okay, so how, how come seven pay, but the other ones don't pay?
Because they'll actually have frontage on Maple Park Drive, so they're not utilizing or traversing across that minimum access.
Is there like, some kind of account that's kept where they put into it every month, every year? Because, because my concern is that 10 years, 12 years, 15 years down the road, when it's fallen apart, and they're trying to go back to agreements, and those people don't even live there anymore, how is, we, we've fought about private streets for a long time on this commission. This is even, in my opinion, even a little bit further down the road, so I'm really concerned about the community being able to get along 15 years from now because we've created a problem that they don't even know that they, that we've created.
Right, so the easement will run with the land, so every time it changes title, those easements carry on to the next owner.
But what I'm saying is, I've lived there for 14 years, now I sell it to you, and then the very next year, there's an assessment, or is there an assessment every year?
That's a great question. I'm not sure I have that. That's a great question. I'm not sure I have that answer.
But it's hard to vote for something when we have no idea how this is going to work. And to the other commissioners comment about if you put duplexes in there, that could actually make this even worse based on the traffic flow and how many cars are going on an easement. Is that what you would say?
Well, yeah, the duplexes would be a public road at that point, I think, is what Ms. Bennett was commenting on. If it was a public road, we would have to do duplexes to... just to meet minimum density. So, I'm not aware... I mean, if you request HOA to be a part of this for those seven lots where there's an annual fee based on an engineer's estimate for maintenance, we would be in agreement to that. I understand the concern now.
I'm not sure that that's our... to be able to do that. But then the last question I have, can you give us... or I guess it'll probably be Doug that'll ask. Can you give us examples of this in the city where it's working really well?
Where one exists right now? I know we've got several approved. I'm not sure which ones are actually existing today.
Clark, can I field that one for you?
I'll talk to Chair with that one.
So, Commissioner Thomas, several years ago, I can't even remember how many, we approved a subdivision that was seven units on a private access, and it's on... it's called Panther Landing. It's right across from almost where it's just south or north of Garfield where it comes across. You got a triplex on one, corner house, and then three houses on the other side. Their application, because I looked at the cross-section on it, was only 24 feet wide, 12 and 12, and that's the paved access. They have a five-foot sidewalk on one side. I know somebody who lives in there, and he says it works perfect. Has no issues.
How do they do the assessment?
There's not really an assessment. If you're dealing with an easement, the easement language itself is going to have triggers. If there's deficiencies in the road that need to be taken care of, then all the parties that join on that road are going to have to put into it. It's like a fence between you and your neighbor. You both own the fence.
So, but it hasn't been triggered yet in that particular case?
That's correct. But it's also been 10... was it 10 years ago at least? And that it's been working quite fabulous. But think about the amount of use of the road. You're going to have to run some pretty heavy equipment on a regular basis to actually degrade a road that's built to good standards. So, it could last 30, 40 years, and nobody's going to need it. Now, I will buffer that point that every single owner of that house is going to have in their preliminary title report an easement, and every title company will give them a full copy of that. So, if they go to doing an HOA, which is going to have an impoundment of money that's going to eventually accrue, that's not going to make those lots as sellable as other ones because it's actually going to be an encumbrance that somebody... the loan officer, who's going to give somebody a loan to get in there. It detracts from that, having an HOA. Having the easement language in there is easier to deal with. A lender's still going to pull it up, and a lender is still going to want to find out what is the mechanism to trigger an improvement that needs to happen. But there's no monetary amount that goes in there. I mean, if they need to have a resurfacing, all the neighbors need to get together and say...
But who triggers it? Because it's a private easement. So, is it triggered by one neighbor? Does it take three neighbors? Those are the questions that I'm worried about getting Jim involved in, which...
That is a good concern, and it could be as little as one. But if good neighbors... Well, one person can change your fence, and you have no say on it. Now, if that one person triggers it unwarranted, they're going to shoulder the cost of that improvement. And they'd have to legally go back to the neighbors and enforce the easement. And if they did it without cause, they're probably going to be footing a bill.
All right. So, I think we're...
Go ahead. I'll cut off.
No, I think we're kind of straying into discussion here as opposed to testimony. So, okay, any other?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
And I'm with Commissioner Pulver. I'm still trying to wrap my head around minimum ma... minor minimum, major minimum. Which easement is going in here, and which of the two allows parking on one side? Is that...
Right. We are proposing the major minimum access easement, which allows up to eight dwelling units to be served. So, this profile cross-section does allow parking on one side.
Okay.
Because it is wider. As staff just showed you, we have a 31-foot easement versus a 20-foot easement for a minor minimum access easement.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. So, I do have a couple of questions, and maybe we want to go back to your site plan for a second. Yeah. Okay. So, who... Lot number nine is the one that's reserved for stormwater. So, who's going to own that property?
Eventually, the city of Medford.
So, they'll be responsible for that?
Yes.
Okay. I honestly, I'm profoundly disappointed that you... when we denied this the first time, that you didn't go back and look at some alternatives. As I look at this, I'm putting my design hat on now. As I look at this thing, I'm... It seems to me odd that with two streets around this thing, that you have eight of your lots taking access off of a major minimum minor accessway. You could take two of the... four of the lots and turn those so that they face Nicholas Lee Drive, because if you take two, they're approximately a square, and that leaves you three lots in the back with a minor access and more room on the two lots. So, did you bother to look at some other alternatives? Or was this the one that you just ran with?
No, we did look at alternatives. Now, whether or not we did that particular design, that one I can't recall off the top of my head, but we did look at multiple options, yes. Yeah, I can't recall exactly, you know, all the different methods, but we were looking at... We looked at public streets. We looked at how to do this. I know we did have some frontage lots over there. But, yeah, we didn't... I can't recall exactly, you know, what we designed and what we threw out and what we finally provided to the city. So, this is what we came up with.
This is what you presented in asking us to approve.
That's correct, because it can meet the minimum density for the site and...
Well, it actually exceeds the minimum density, to be honest. Minimum would be 10, and you've got 12.
Okay. Well, 11, because one's a stormwater.
Well, all right.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I assume you want to reserve time for rebuttal?
Yes, please.
All right. With that, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody. Does staff have any additional comments? Planning?
No.
Planning. Engineering, have anything to add? Okay. Legal, have anything to add?
No.
Okay. Do you need time for rebuttal, Mr. Stevens? I guess not. No rebuttal? All right. Okay. With that, we will close the public hearing. And do we have motions for consideration?
Mr. Chair, with your discretion, I'd like to separate this into two different motions.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the applicant's findings and adopt the final order for approval of ZC-25-226 per the staff report dated October 16th, 2025, including exhibits A through O.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Sorry, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay. Seeing none, Kaylee, can we have a roll call, please?
David Culbertson?
Yes.
Jeff Thomas?
Yes.
Rachel Bennett?
Yes.
Jared Pulver?
Yes.
Jim Wallen?
Yes.
Larry Busco?
Yes.
Mark McHickney?
Yes.
We have seven yeses?
Thank you. The motion passes for the zone change. Okay, now...
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to adopt the findings as... Adopt the applicant... Mr. Chair, move to adopt the applicant's findings and adopt the final order for approval of LDS-25-227 per the staff report dated October 16th, 2025, including exhibits A through O, and the approval for the subdivision to include the creation of a major minimum access easement in lieu of a public street pursuant to MLDC 10.450 subsection 1.
Thank you. Do we have a second for this motion?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion on this item? Yes. Let's start with... Yep, yep, sorry. Yep.
All right. I can appreciate... I think we've all, at one point or another, taken up the banner of former Commissioner Mansfield's private roads and easements thoughts. And I don't disagree with him. I do think this is going to be a tight fit. I think HOAs and easements are all well and good until they're not, and then, you know, parade for lawyers. But I don't think it's our place to protect the property owners from themselves. And if these sell, they sell. And I appreciate 11 potential new dwelling units coming on the market. So, yeah, I'm going to be supporting the major minimum access easement, and best of luck.
Okay. Mr. Pulver?
Yeah, I guess I would sort of echo what Ms. Bennett said, slightly different means. But I guess I would say if we object to the tools that are in our code, that's a different issue, and we should take that up with staff and make recommendations that they study them, and we talk about it and make recommendations to council, et cetera, for changes. But the code as written now, I think, permits what has been put in front of us. I do recognize Mr. Mansfield's concern, as well as our other fellow commissioners' concerns, maybe in the same vein. And I struggle with that because I think, you know, approving something that has, you know, known downfalls in the future is frustrating, but I think our code allows it, so I think we have to support it. So, anyway, I'll be supporting the motion on the table.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to echo. I mean, we've done this in the past. I know the people that live in the other community, they have no issues. Even if they'd reconfigured this and created a flag lot to be able to access three of them, it still wouldn't mitigate the easement issue and who's going to take care of the land. None of that disappears with a flag lot situation. I think that they have met the code. It meets everything that we create with our code as a box. They fit within the box. This application should be approved.
Thank you. Any other comments that way?
Just briefly, Mr. Chair, my view on some of these issues is that simply because an application checks all the boxes, I think we also have an obligation to the community at large to consider the effect on subsequent property owners here. And because if all we're going to do is sit here and check the box and not exercise our independent view on some of these things, why are we here? I think Commissioner Thomas's concerns are have some validity to them, and I am too concerned about this easement as opposed to, as the Chair pointed out, turning some of these lots to have street frontage as opposed to an easement. Thank you.
Thank you. So, my comments on this, I intend to vote no on this because... for a number of reasons based on the code. First of all, the major minimum access is listed as an alternative, which gives us some discretionary approval on whether or not it makes sense to use it. It also means that you should have explored other alternatives, and this would be the only one that's available. It's not... It's not a prime way to do a project. It's only one that if all else fails, you would make that happen. I'm sorry I put my design hat on, but it certainly seems to me reasonable that there are other ways, especially with streets on two sides, that you could configure this so you don't have to have two-thirds of the people accessing their house off of one driveway. Let's see. I had one other comment on this. Oh, and if they do switch that, then it becomes a minor one. I think also, we didn't hear from the applicant. They have basically no idea how this thing is supposed to function, and they're leaving that to attorneys at some point. Having lived through one of those kinds of things myself, where they have a private road and nobody knows how to fix it, and nobody's bothered to set up an account to make that work, at some point, these owners are going to have to figure out how to come up with 20,000 or 30,000 bucks a pop to make this thing happen. So, I am concerned that we are allowing a nightmare, and it's discretionary nightmare. It's not... It's only... The way I would read the code, it's only allowed in the code if other things aren't... don't work. And the applicant hasn't given us any kind of demonstration that they looked at some other alternatives to make this work. So, I intend to vote against this site plan.
That's what... When I tried to research the minor-major versus the minor, that's the way I read the code as well. So, if it was able to be done as a minor, which it... Based on some people's thoughts, it can be, then I don't think it says that we have to vote yes for this. And I'm with Jim. I... When we're told we have to be voting a certain way, then we shouldn't have to actually have the meeting. We could all stay home and watch the football game.
All right. Thank you. Okay. One more comment at the end there. Yes, sir.
Sure. How you were voting, I guess I better do the same thing. But I have to say I'm going to support it because if I'm one, it operates. It's going to... And it's going to have no more difficulties than all the minimum access drives that we already have in town. And they seem to be operating fine. They seem to be getting maintained when... Maybe not necessarily when they need to be maintained. The other thing... The other thing, too, is that there's nothing stopping both lots five and 12 from taking access on to Nicholas Drive, Nicholas Lee Drive, and which would only leave five lots, then that would actually be taking access on that minimum access drive. So, anyway, I'm going to support it.
Okay. Well, I would say it's easier to get three people to agree on something than it is to get eight. And also, to your other point, if Lot 12 and Lot 5 took access off of Nicholas Lee Drive, they're still on the hook for the access easement, and the others are never, ever going to get them to contribute because they get their driveway off of someplace else. So, honestly, I think it creates a worse problem. So...
I'm not suggesting that they do that. I'm not suggesting that they do that, but a lot of people do things I don't suggest.
And sometimes that's what we're afraid of, right? Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right, Kaylee, let's have a vote on this one.
David Culbertson?
Yes.
Jeff Thomas?
No.
Rachel Bennett?
Yes.
Jared Pulver?
Yes.
Jim Wallen?
No.
Larry Busco?
Yes.
Mark McHickney?
No.
We have four yeses and three nos.
All right. I guess the motion passes. Good luck with your project, and I do mean it. Okay, moving on. Agenda item 50.3, ZC-25-282, LDS-25-283, and E-25-274. Consideration of Sunset Ridge Estates a proposed five-lot residential subdivision, along with a request for a change of zone from SFR 00 to SFR 4, and an exception request related to driveway throat widths. The property consists of a single parcel developed with a single-family residence, excuse me, totaling approximately 1.81 acres, and is located at the southwest corner of Rolling Meadows Lane and Thrasher Lane. The applicant is John Lawton. The agent is CSA Planning Limited, and the planner is Dustin Severs. Okay. Does any commissioner have a conflict of interest or ex parte contact to disclose regarding this application? Seeing none, does anyone in attendance wish to question the commission as to conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts? Seeing none there either? Dustin, how about his staff report?
Yep. Thank you. Dustin Severs, again, with the planning department. Next up is Sunset Ridge Estates, stated this is a land division, zone change, and an exception request. Did receive one new exhibit. We forwarded it over to you by email this morning. This was an email submitted to staff from a neighbor. This was an email submitted to staff from a neighbor located just northwest of the site. She did express some concerns with the development. I'm hoping we will answer some of her questions this evening. Also received a phone call from the neighbors just to the east of her. Talked to her just a couple hours on the phone. She did seem satisfied. She didn't submit anything formally to the commission. She just had some questions. She seemed satisfied based on what I explained to her, how the cul-de-sac was going to be created and the number of lots that would be taking access off of it. Looking at legal requirements, before I talked about the land division and the zone change in our prior application. So we also have an exception criteria to go over. This is found in section 10.1862 of the Land Development Code, included in its entirety on the screen shown. So looking at our project summary. The site totals 1.8181 acres and is developed with a single-family residence. This is unlike our previous application, that the house is proposed to stay with the future development of the site. Site does have a couple of street frontages, along its east boundary is Thrasher Lane, which is classified as a standard residential street. Along its northeast is Rolling Meadows Lane. This is a residential lane, which is only partially constructed. The north half was constructed with the subdivision to north, which I believe is Rolling Hills or Rolling Meadows subdivision. The surrounding area is mostly single-family residential. However, you see just to the west of the site, here's the subject site here, and this is the area for the proposed subdivision. Just to the west is the Lone Pine Park, which is a city park. And further down to the west is Lone Pine Elementary School. And we also have a residential facility to the south, the Veranda Park, Springs at Veranda Park. Showed on the screen here, the applicant provided several images of the subject site and the existing building. So the general land use plan designation of the site is urban residential. Like our previous projects, it's also an S F R 00. Again, is our holding zone that we designate new residential properties with when they get annexed in the city from the county and they remain S F R 00. They can do a house, an A D U, nothing above or beyond that until they go through the zone change when we look at facility adequacy. Property is also in the airport area of concern. And the proposal is Sunset Ridge Estate subdivision. This is a five-lot residential subdivision, along with a zone change request. They're asking to go from S F R 00 to S F R 4. And they're also asking for an exception regarding the throat width for the existing driveway, which serves the existing home. So like the previous application, we'll look at each of these in turns. We have three applications to look at. First, we'll look at the land division application. As always, we'll look at density first. So they're proposing five lots, which does meet that minimum requirement for the size of the property and its zoning. Look at our land division standards. All five lots meet the dimensional standards for the S F R 4 zoning district. That's for a lot area with depth and frontage. So Lot 1 is proposed as an oversized lot, so this is where the existing house will remain. So the code does allow for lots, newly created lots of an existing house and yard to be oversized. It can't be more than twice the maximum size of the underlying zoning. It does meet that standard. And they're also proposing a flag lot for Lot 5 and does meet those standards as listed in 10.450. Lots 1 and 2 are proposing to take access off the public street. Lot 1, the existing house will be, is looking to just continue to use the existing driveway, which is the subject of the exception request. And Lot 2 will also be taking access off of Thrasher. And then the remaining three lots, Lots 3, 3, 4, and 5 will take access off the cul-de-sac. As you can see, the applicant is proposing to complete the, this residential lane. It's an offset cul-de-sac. Again, the north half was constructed with the subdivision to north. They will be completing that. So again, we will have, currently there's, since the residential lane is actually very similar to a major minimum access easement, to make things confusing, so they are limited to eight residences taking access off the residential lane. Currently, there are four residences taking access off this partially constructed residential lane. Once completed, once the final plat is in, they will be adding three lots. That'd be a total of seven residences. That leaves them one more, they could potentially, one more unit that could potentially go on the property. So it does meet those residential lane standards. And finally, they're also providing an accessway. So probably cul-de-sacs are required to provide a 12-foot public access or shared accessway for pedestrians and cyclists. We hear the phrase "path to nowhere" often, but it doesn't really apply in this situation. As you can see, the pedestrian path will connect to the Lone Pine Park to the west. And further to the south, we have the Lone Pine Elementary School. So I think this is a, in this particular case, we have a nice connection here. Next, move on to the zone change. Just like our previous applications, it's a simple one, you go from S F R 00 to S F R 4. S F R 4 is allowed in the urban residential glut designation. There are no locational criteria for a zone change to S F R 4, so that criteria is not applicable. And all the reports submitted by the Public Works, Metford Water Commission, and the fire shows that facility adequacy or facilities, infrastructure will all be adequate at the time of future development. So all the applicable criteria are satisfied regarding the zone change, which brings us to our last application. And this is the exception. So as you see, there's an existing driveway. It's essentially, it functions as two driveways. It's kind of merged. You see there is a planter strip with devised the two. The two individually and the two combined do exceed the maximum width allowance for driveways on residential streets. However, as stated in the applicant's findings, this is an existing, this is a stuff standard driveway. However, there are exceptional circumstances stated with the landscape and also it's a legal non-conforming condition. So the applicant does feel like it would be onerous to require this to be removed. The applicant or the owners of the property would like to continue to use this driveway. Public Works didn't have any opposition to this request. So staff is supportive of the exception request, but you feel like it does meet the exception criteria, particularly criteria number three, which requires that there is an exceptional circumstance. And we believe exceptional circumstances do exist. Move right into our findings and recommendation. The applicant's, we staff has reviewed the applicant's findings and conclusions, and we recommend the commission adopt the findings as submitted. And our recommended action is that we adopt the findings recommended by staff and adopt the final orders for approval of the land division, the zone change, and the exception as per the staff report dated October 16, 2025. Includes Exhibits A through U, U being our new exhibit submitted or forwarded over to you this morning. We're also asking you approve the Rolling Meadows Lane to terminate in a cul-de-sac. We're asking that you approve Lot 5 to be created as a flag lot. And finally, we ask that you adopt the applicant's stipulations as stated in their submitted findings. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin. Any questions of staff? Yes, sir.
Dustin, can I ask, when I went through the staff report on this, it seemed like the fire department had an issue with access to Lot 5. Is that not true? They don't have any issue with getting access to Lot 5?
Maybe some comments, but ultimately, they're supportive of the plat as presented.
Okay, so they're okay with the way they're doing it. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other? Just, one, just a point of clarification here. Veranda Park Drive that kind of touches the southwest corner of Lot 5, that's a private road, isn't it? Owned by Veranda Park? It's not a public street?
It's not.
Yeah, so, so they, Lot 5 can't really take access from there?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Oops, all right. Huh? Yeah, yeah, well, it's, okay. With that, we will open the public hearing and ask the applicant to come forward and talk about their project.
Good evening, commissioners. For the record, my name is Jay Harland with CSA Planning. My office is at 4497 Brown Ridge, where the agent of record for the application before you. As usual, Dustin makes my job pretty easy and did a thorough report. So I'll just kind of speak to the two questions commissioners have. I'll start with Chair McKechnie's because it's the funner one. It is, that is private drive and also there's about a 10-foot retaining wall straight up in that location. So you're probably, without some sort of catapult or something, you're not going to be able to get any access through there. So that's, that's that. The other thing that we just noticed this in the fire department report is the, kind of the conversation at L D was, was, as Dustin described, supportive and they're kind of, you know, they were like, everything's fine. But then there was an oddity that I would just like to kind of point out for the record on page, I don't know wherever the fire department thing is. 167, thank you, Kelly. So it's kind of weird. They're talking about the measurement, but they're measuring it from Thrasher. Well, so I don't know if maybe they were thinking that was a private road or something, but I mean, that's a public street with a, with a, a,
Cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac that we're completing as close as possible to the standard, given that for some odd reason, the way they did the, the way they started that radius, you can see there's like a little notch in it there. It's like they didn't, it was probably a different radius standard when that was approved. So we're completing it as best we can. But the point is, is that's a public street to as close to the city's current standard as we can make it. And so, you know, from everything I understand about the fire code, the measurement would go from the edge of the right away and not all the way from Thrasher Lane. So I don't really know why that is, but I think that'll get caught in public improvement plan review and probably be addressed. So I don't think there's really anything for the commission to do. I would just point it out for the record. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions that the commission has.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Thank you. Jason, thank you. What I was wondering was, it looks like, you know, all the natural drainage kind of drains back to the southwest corner. And is there going to be some shared drainage with the Veranda Park down there or?
Commissioner Busco, the drainage is painful, but we've worked with Alina and I think we've got it. We, in the record, there is a concept that Jim Higday worked out with, engineer for the project, worked out with Alina, that Alina was comfortable going, yes, if you do it this way, this can work. There is an existing drain in the very southwest corner that was put in when Veranda Park was put in. There was not a public storm drainage easement in that location, so that creates some issues for public water going to that facility. And Jim and Alina kind of talked it through and then worked out a concept that the public street water doesn't need to go that way. It's possible the roof drain water on the lots 3 and 4 and that's a little bit of the driveway water might go through a little private swale and then go into, follow the natural course. The other possibility as they get into final engineering is the owner of this project actually is the guy who owns Cut &amp; Break. And so he has access to a lot of concrete to do filling that would normally be uneconomic for any other project. And sort of every time I talk about it, he's like, don't worry, we'll get the water to go the way it needs to go. So I'm going to leave that to him and Higday when it comes time to do the actual engineering for the project.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding this application? All right, I'm not seeing any. So, planning, have any additional comments?
No, thank you.
Engineering, any comments?
No, thank you.
Legal, any comments?
No.
All right, and I'm assuming you don't need time for rebuttal, so we will close the public hearing. And we have a motion for consideration.
First, I'd like to ask the commissioners if, since there are three applications on this, if they feel that we need to split this one into applications separately?
No.
Okay. Ms. Chair, I move to adopt the findings as recommended by staff and adopt the final orders for approval of Z C dash 25 dash 282, L D S dash 25 dash 283, and E 25 dash 284 per the staff report dated October 16, 2025, including Exhibits A through U, as well as approving approval for Rolling Meadows Lane to terminate in a cul-de-sac pursuant to M L D C 10 dot 450 sub 1C and 10 dot 450 sub 2A and B, as well as the approval of Lot 5 to be created as a flag lot pursuant to M L D C 10 dot 50450 sub 3, and the adoption of the applicant's stipulations as stated by the applicant's submitted findings of fact and conclusions of law, Exhibit B.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
As long as I don't have to repeat it.
Yes, we'll do, probably. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any other discussion on this agenda item? All right, seeing none, Kaylee, can we have a roll call, please?
Rachel Bennett?
Yes.
Jeff Thomas?
Yes.
Jared Pulver?
Yes.
Jim Wallen?
Yes.
David Colbertson?
Yes.
Larry Busco?
Yes.
Mark McKechnie?
Yes.
We have seven yeses.
Thank you, and the motion passes. Good luck with your project. Okay, moving on to item 50.4 C U P 25 dash 235, request for a conditional use permit for a new public park approximately 7.76 acres in size. The new park is located at the southeast corner of Dakota Avenue and Gay Lee Avenue. The site consists of a single parcel approximately 8.26 acres in size and is within the S F R 4 zoning district. The applicant is the City of Medford Parks and Recreation and Facilities Department. The agent is Richard Stevens and Associates. The planner is Stefan Ronfeldt. Does any commissioner have a conflict of interest or ex parte contact to disclose regarding this application? Seeing none, does anyone in attendance wish to question the commission as to conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts? All right, not seeing anything there. Stefan, how about a staff report?
Of course. Good evening, Commissioner Stefan Ronfeldt with the planning department. Next up is conditional use permit 25 235. And for conditional use permits, the criteria can be found in section 10.184 sub 3, and that has all been addressed in the staff report. So we are talking about the actual park in Edison Park that is coming for you tonight. So we are within the urban residential GLUT map designation. The zoning is S F R 4 for that area. It's about an eight-and-a-quarter acre parcel within Edison Park Phase 3. It's currently reserved acreage. That's what's shown on tenant flat, but this application tonight will pretty much remove that reserved acreage designation so they can move forward. Little bit of background, so just about a year and a half ago, the Edison Park Phase 3 was approved. And like was highlighted here, the park location was determined back then. It'll be surrounded by mostly single-family residential development. Nothing is, we haven't seen any updates on this application yet. So this is really the first big step to move forward with Phase 3 of the entire development. So like I said earlier, the approval is for a neighborhood park, which is a permitted use in the S F R 4 zoning district, subject to the approval of a conditional use permit. So right now, preliminary layout for the park includes quite a few amenities. We have a big old open field in the middle, basketball court closer to Dakota Avenue to be renamed Sunset Drive in the near future. We have a playground towards the entrance, pickleball course, court that is located away, as far away as possible from future residential development for mostly noise. We have a few covered picnic tables, a dog run, and then stormwater detention on both sides of the park. And then there will be some future, future amenities like splash pad, but that isn't in the budget just yet. If we look at the access points, so there's going to be five pedestrian access points to the park, one of Dakota, and then two on each side of Gay Lee and Woodland, I believe that is, Woodland Avenue. Parking is not required for neighborhood parks and is supposed to be a neighborhood park, so people are, it is assumed that people walk to the park and there is no designated off-street parking proposed for this development. The entire Edison Park subdivision has a trip accounting or a trip cap. We went through the numbers, Public Works did. And after the park has been approved, there is still been approved, there's still 34 PM peak hour trips. So we are, we are within the, the trip cap, um, that is allowed for the entire development. Uh, development standards, um, which in this case mostly setbacks for the few permanent structures that are going to be included in the park, they have all been met. And then, uh, staff went over the specific conditions that the planning commission can apply it to CUPs. I reached out to our parks planner and she, she said that the opening hours for the park will just be like all the other neighborhood parks. So 6:00 AM to 10:30 PM. Um, no lighting is proposed right now for the basketball courts or the pickleball courts. Um, so we did not, um, come up with any additional conditions, um, that should be required. Um, with that, the commission can find that the conditional, the application satisfies, um, the first criteria for a conditional use permit. And it will, it will not cause significant adverse impacts on livability value or appropriate development of a budding property or the surrounding area when compared to the impacts of permitted development that is not classified as conditional. And that's mostly based on the fact that there is currently no neighbors and everybody will move to the park. So they should be aware of what's going to happen in their backyard. So with that, we do recommend, um, to, um, to adopt the final order tonight for approval of the CUP 25 235 per the staff report dated October 16th, 2025, and that's including Exhibits A through L. And then I did add a, um, second bullet point here that talks about block perimeter standards. Doc just reminded me that app was really taken care of with this, with the subdivision application. So it's kind of redundant. If you do want to spare me a commission report, I wouldn't be too upset if you include it in your motion. So I don't have to do any major changes. With that, thank you. If you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions of staff? Yes.
Hi. Um, I understand that we're, that you're not recommending requiring additional lighting at the basketball or pickleball courts. It appears from the map that there is only lighting at the entrance to the park on Dakota Avenue.
There is security lighting throughout the entire path network, is my understanding.
That addresses my question.
There's no like.
No enormous lamps, but there's something so that the back of the park does have
Yeah.
lighting that isn't reliant on ambient light from the surrounding residences.
And we do have existing, we have light pollution standards in the code. And we do also have noise standards in the code which they, um, which apply.
We're just not recommending, we're not requesting anything on top of
Correct.
those minimum standards
Yeah.
that they're already accounting for. Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on that one? Yeah.
So a couple of meetings ago, I got labeled the anti-downtown guy. So now I'm going to be the anti-park guy. So Dr. No over here. Um, so, uh, Stefan, just so I'm understanding, I mean, if the thing is approved, they have some timeframe to build it, which is probably fairly lengthy. Is that fair to say?
Two years.
Okay. It's two-year approval. And then, and this is kind of our only quote unquote bite at the apple. Like this design that they're putting in front of us, even though we're not park designers, it's our job to decide this is good or bad. And if they make a major change to that, then they'd have to bring it back.
Correct.
But otherwise they can kind of do something within these parameters.
It was designed by a professional parks designer.
Okay. So I guess I want to piggyback on Ms. Bennett's question on the lighting within the park. I guess, I just, I'd like to understand what that is because it's a, it's a really tricky one. I think I initially was pretty sensitive because I, I mean, I think it's a nice layout and everything, but, um, if I was one of the neighboring houses that doesn't exist yet, I guess, you know, if it was too dark back there, I'd be a little leery of how to, you know, how does, how am I comfortable that there's not people that I don't want to be loitering around in the park after hours, whatever, I can't see them, you know, and probably got a fenced backyard. So I don't really know what's going on back there. On the flip side, we've certainly heard plenty of complaints over the years about too much lighting coming from other things, whatever that may be. So I, I just, I guess I'd, I'd like to be put at ease on that. I'm not sure you can do that, but you might give it a shot. So that's my first question.
It's my understanding that it's going to be the standard, like three foot, four foot tall security lightings that they're going to install all around the, the pathway system. There's just no, like no floodlights proposed. That, that's the point I wanted to make. It's, it's going to be lighted. I haven't been to a park at night to be.
I guess I've not seen, I've not seen the lights that you're kind of talking about in the park setting. So.
Yeah. There's, maybe it's better on paper or on your iPad. There's tiny dots.
Oh, okay.
Along the, the pathways.
Well, but they're path lights anyway.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then what about the cut-throughs? I guess they're labeled 13, that the cut-throughs into the neighborhoods.
That is an excellent question that I do not have.
Okay.
An answer for.
So that's one question I have. Uh, the second issue I have is with the no parking on the site. Um, I guess I, I'm thinking about a number of different parks that I've been to or driven by or whatever else. And, um, with the exception of one, all of them have some parking. Uh, and I would say the other thing that differentiates them from this one is this doesn't, this only has the one, I mean, it, it has a small street frontages on Gailey and Woodland, but most of it's just Dakota. So there's not a lot of opportunity for true street parking immediately adjacent to the park. So I do think it, I mean, I, I guess in your presentation, you said that anybody that moves into these houses knows what they're getting into. And I guess to some degree that's true, but I think in the previous hearing we had tonight, sometimes you don't always know what you're getting into, uh, when you get it, before you get into it. Um, so I do think, I, I mean, I do think parks have a heavy parking demand despite what we like to say about alternative modes of transportation. So I'm concerned about that component of the park. I don't know that there's anybody here from the Parks Department to speak to it or not. So I don't know. I mean, I'd hate to just have to straight up say no, but I kind of, that's kind of where I'm falling right now, at least based on what I'm looking at. So anyway, that's just, I don't know that you have any, there's a question to be answered there, but that's my thoughts on that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes.
So, and I don't want to beat upon you. So I don't even know if I should ask you the questions, but it should be somebody from the Parks Department that is here because I have a question about one. Is every park open 6:00 to 10:30 regardless of lighting? I mean, I understand a park being open like Bear Creek because you have lighted tennis courts and things, but, but why is a park with zero lighting open till 10:30 at night?
Well, there, I mean, the security lighting will be there. It's not going to be completely dark. It's minor. We do have Mr. Stevens here for, as my backup. So he's representing.
And then the second thing, but my bigger concern is just the parking. Um, I don't know of any park, and I've been to most of the parks, um, that doesn't have parking where there's not cars parked there. So are those, those are all proposed to be moved to the street?
Yeah. It's, it was explained to me that this is supposed to be a true neighborhood park where people walk to the park from the adjacent residences.
But, but if you're going to be putting in things like basketball courts and pickleball courts, people are going to gravitate to those, that those are the courts that are open.
Yeah.
I would suggest, but I, I don't, there's nobody from the Parks Department to ask those questions. I don't know what to do.
Well, we do have an applicant coming up.
We have Mr. Stevens.
Yes, sir.
Real quick, uh, as these residential lots bordering the park are constructed, are those going to have direct access to the park through their fences? Or is that going to be restricted? Or do you know?
I guess that's ultimately up to them. I, I don't think there's any fences proposed with this application. We build around the entire park. So.
Thank you. Okay. Any other, yes, sir.
If I could piggyback on Jared's question, is, are there, do you know that, are there any parks in Medford that don't have parking?
I am, I don't know. You're talking to the wrong park, Parks expert.
Not to testify, but there is one in, uh, Summerfield, uh, in the actual, not the one, the small one on the corner of Cherry Lane and Hillcrest, but the one in, the internal one doesn't, but it is bordered by three streets. So.
Thank you. All right. Um, I just have one kind of general question. Actually, it's a planning question.
Yay.
I know.
Maybe.
I know. Yeah. For 50 points. Um, so, uh, uh, all the other parks, we recently changed to a P1 zone. So, uh, why did we not do this as a P1 zone change? Because then that doesn't require a CUP, right?
Right. So Kelly, I confirm your planning department. So what happens with the P1 zone is the P1 zone is applied to city-owned properties. The city doesn't own this property yet.
Yet.
Yet. Oh, I see.
So, and so there is, uh, it's called a park development review, which is very parallel to a conditional use permit for properties in the P1 zone. So the criteria and the conditions are almost identical to a conditional use permit. So it's, it's a parallel process, but because this is not yet city-owned, not P1 zoned, therefore the CUP.
I see. And so at some point when the city owns it, we will see a zone change? Is that?
We will, um, yes, there will be a, a zone change. It's one we can do administratively. It's not something that I think that we can just correct the map if I remember.
I think there's a GLUP as well. So we have to do.
There's a GLUP change too? So it's going to be a big deal. Okay.
It has an overlay.
It's tidy up work.
Okay. Hey, we're used to that, I guess. Okay. All right. Uh, if there's no other questions from staff, we will open the public hearing and ask the applicant's agent to come forward and talk about the project. And hopefully pull us out of the rabbit hole.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, for the record, my name's Clark Stevens with Richard Stevens and Associates. We're located at 244 South Grape Street in Medford, Oregon. We're here tonight representing Terry Bunton with Bunton Construction in this CUP application for the formal Addison Park within the Addison Park subdivision number three. Uh, staff did a thorough and complete, uh, presentation for you and did a great job in identifying that the subject property is in compliance with Section 10.184 for conditional use permits. Again, we're proposing a park prior to development of any residential structures within this project. So there should be full disclosure upon sales, um, with that, um, development. In regards to a couple of your questions, uh, within Exhibit G of your packet, uh, there's a letter from Rich Rosenthal in regards to the parking and the Parks Department parking analysis for this, uh, site. In summary, he says that no off-street parking is going to be required due to the anticipated users and their locale and the number of persons within this park facility. The intent is to enhance pedestrian and bicycle traffic, uh, to use this. In addition, Dakota and also Oak Grove Road has, uh, shared, um, pedestrian bike paths. That's part of the, um, what do you call it? Shared network? Uh, I can't recall the term, but there's a common shared pathway. Uh, so there's going to be, um, sufficient bicycle and pedestrian traffic throughout this neighborhood. Um, in addition, this park's going to serve just within the Addison Park subdivision over 600 dwelling units. So this is going to be local focused, um, residentially used within this area, which can also get into Clover Lane and those residents within that. Um, another park, if I'm not mistaken, that does not have off-street parking is, I don't recall the name of it, at Hillcrest and Modoc.
Rural Park.
Rural Park.
Rural, yeah. So if I'm not mistaken, that also does not have off-street parking. And it's a nice neighborhood park with playgrounds. Um, I see youngsters doing soccer practice out there and it functions just fine for the neighborhood. So based on Mr. Rosenthal's analysis about parking needs and demands and, uh, you know, the additional off-street parking in other locations, I think this is satisfied. In regards to the lighting, uh, we're in agreement that, you know, there's lights and I would have swore there was actually one next to the playground also and not just at the, um, entry within the site. But, uh, this is, you know, intended to be a daytime or daylight hour facility. Um, we didn't want to have over, or lights after hours because then it's no longer a neighborhood park. People will be there till midnight using, using the facilities, the basketball or the pickleball courts. So when the sun sets, we want everyone to basically go home and, and do their own thing there and not be disturbing everybody else. So that's the intent of the overhead lights and, but yes, we will have to have security lights throughout. You know, they're basically waist-high, very low illumination, um, just to light up the areas for security purposes. With that, I will conclude and be happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Yes, Rachel.
Hi. Two questions. One, um, kind of harkening back to something that was raised earlier is the, uh, whether homeowners will have the option of accessing the park directly from their lots if they have a fence around their lot and they put in a gate.
Right. We are not proposing that at this point. If they want to do something like, I know Bear Creek Park, you know, there's a lot of pedestrian access. Um, I would say that's between the Parks Department and these homeowners, um, whether or not they want to do that. But we're not proposing any, um, direct access, you know, through the backyard.
Being proposed anywhere outside of the dog run, correct?
Through the, well, they would, those residents would have, yeah, four other entries that they could access the park, correct?
Um, the other question, I noticed that the restroom unit is just like somewhere down the line. Is that like, is that a future development because this is intended to be a neighborhood park that presumably anyone using the park would just go home? I mean, I, it's just, it's a large lot to not have any nearby bathroom for this park of this size. I'm just curious why that is.
Right. Um, yeah, the Parks Department, uh, they, we did talk about that and their feeling was when there's more use, that's when it's going to be more warranted to have a restroom. And I believe it was even going to be just a one-room restroom at that point in time. So these are, I guess, what they would call short-term uses versus, you know, going from the playground to the splash pad to this picnic tables, you know, like an all afternoon event, um, where you're going to utilize or, or have a need for restrooms at that point. Um, so at this moment, they're saying it's not warranted at this. So that's a Parks Department decision.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none?
Reserve time for rebuttal?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding this application? All right. Not seeing anybody. So, uh, planning, have any additional comments? Engineering, any comments?
No.
Legal, have any comments?
No.
Okay. I guess you don't need time for rebuttal. So with that, we will close the public hearing. And we have a motion for consideration.
Ms. Chair, I move to adopt the applicant's findings and adopt the final order for approval of CUP dash 25 dash 235. Per the planning commission report dated October 16th, 2025, including Exhibits A through L, as well as the approval to exceed maximum block length and perimeter standards as approved in LDS dash 24 dash 087 and allowed in MLDC 10 dot 426 sub 4B when outdoor recreational facilities inhibit the creation of new streets for connectivity.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Uh, yes, sir.
So, I mean, I, I struggle a little bit with my options here, um, because I guess I think it's pretty hard to argue that a park's not in the public interest, but it's a little challenging to impose conditions on the fly, uh, at least in the vein that I want to. But, uh, so I'll defer to the balance of the body, but, um, I, I would support something along the lines of requiring a dozen parking spaces or something in that neighborhood and, uh, that restrooms be, or at least, at least a single ADA unisex restroom be constructed, um, upon initial construction. construction of the park.
Are you planning to offer that as an amendment?
Well, I, I mean, I'd like to hear some discussion before I do that. If, if it's, I mean, if, if I feel like there's enough consensus that that's a good idea or that that's the right number of parking spaces, 'cause I, again, I'm, you know, shooting from the hip on this, I would do that, but I don't wanna do it unnecessarily.
Okay. Well, I guess we'll have a little discussion here. Go ahead.
No, I, I read through the letter that Rosenthal sent. He, he's indicating that there's 14-plus, which all seem to be in the, on Dakota for on-street parking. But I, I really actually would echo Commissioner Pulver's concern that, you know, most of the parks, I mean, I go to Lone Pine Park myself to run my dog. There are no parking spaces on that, but everybody parks on the street. And Lone Pine, or Lone Oak is wide enough, so it's not an issue. But, you know, I agree, very few parks don't have, particularly when you're putting in a basketball court and pickleball, 'cause the pickleball port, pickleball courts at Lone Oak are used almost every day.
Thank you. Do we have a comment down here?
So I can't vote against a park, so I'm gonna support it unless there's enough to go in a different direction. I will say just from one person, I'm very, 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 very disappointed that there wasn't a representative from the parks to maybe answer some questions and make us feel better about certain things and we could answer the questions. So I would hope in the future when they bring proposal for a park, they just have somebody to represent them so we can ask them questions directly.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Um, I'm, I'm really not interested in making them put in parking spaces, 'cause honestly, that's not my bag. But I would support that if it is included with an amendment for a bathroom. I, I understand the idea that folks will probably only be here an hour, but I know y'all have kids or grandkids, or you're just a person with a body, and I don't care how long you're out, sometimes you need a bathroom and it's a real drag, especially if we're not putting in parking spaces, that they're gonna have to walk away or walk some distance or walk home, whatever. I, I find that really impractical and shortsighted, especially on an accessibility level. So I'll support a friendly amendment to require some parking spaces if that includes a bathroom, one bathroom onsite at the time of development, not at a later phase. I also think that if we don't require even a handful of parking spaces, which again, I'm not super interested in, folks are just gonna park in front of residences on the street. And there are enough neighborhood accessways here that, you know, you may not think that, you know, because your house is far away from the entrance, you're not gonna be affected, but it'll have a spillover effect. And I know that's been a concern that's been raised here many times before, and we hear it from the public, and I'd like to get ahead of that. So, yeah, I'd support, I'd support an amendment to the motion and vote favorably on that.
Well, Mr. Pulver, are you making a amendment or not?
Sure. Yeah, sure. I'd propose a friendly amendment to require the construction of a, a single unisex ADA restroom at time of construction of the park, as well as the inclusion of 12 finished parking spaces.
On-site?
On-site.
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, if I might, so Mr. Thomas made a good point, before you vote, Mr. Thomas made a good point about not having somebody from Parks here to speak to your questions. And I don't know, Mr. Stevens, if you'd be willing to continue to the next meeting? Before we require the-
Something that-
Is quite costly, and then we'll have to come back to you. If it's agreeable, I'd rather continue and let's have somebody from Parks come and answer some of those questions.
Right. I would be in agreement to that, to actually have either Rich or Kim present at the next meeting.
Okay.
So, do you have the date on that?
Uh, next meeting is-
Like the ninth?
November 13.
Thirteenth.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to withdraw my motion.
Okay.
And I would like to-
Substitute it for-
Substitute it and request to continue CUP-25-235 to the November 9th Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
Thirteenth, November 13.
Thirteenth.
November 13th Planning Commission meeting.
Yeah. And we had a, uh, didn't you second it?
I, I will second, uh-
You'll withdraw your first second.
I'll withdraw my amendment and second Dave's motion to continue.
Okay. Very good. It's been moved and seconded, and Kaylee, can we have a roll call on that motion, please?
Jared Pulver?
Yes.
Jeff Thomas?
Yes.
Larry Besko?
Yes.
David Colbertson?
Yes.
Jim Wallen?
Yes.
Rachel Bennett?
Yes.
Mark McHekney?
Yes.
We have seven yeses.
Thank you. The motion passes, so we will see you on the 13th, or hopefully on the 13th. Okay, moving on here. Item 50.5, DCA 25-170, consideration of a legislative amendment to Chapter 10 of the Medford Municipal Code related to access standards. The applicant is the City of Medford. The planner is Liz Hamblin. Liz, how about a staff report?
I have to get it open again. All right. I'm Liz Hamblin with the Planning Department, and I'm gonna be working on the driveway access code amendment, which is what you will use in the future when you're looking at developments. So this is DCA 25-170. There is a correction that I'd like to note. It's on page 228 of the packet. There, in Section C and Section 4, I guess, is, it is proposed language, so it should've been bold. It's a formatting issue that happened. But it is new language, and I'd just like to point that out. It will be fixed when it goes to City Council. So the proposal is a development code amendment for driveway access standards. We'll go over the criteria and authority, history and analysis of the project, agency comments, and then on to the conclusions and recommendations. This is a Type 4 legislative decision. The proposal must comply with Section 10.218 of the Land Development Code. The Planning Commission shall base its recommendation and the City Council its decision on the following criteria. We've addressed this criteria in the staff report. So on to the history of this. Quarterly stakeholder meetings are held with the Public Works Department and other city departments with local developers, land use planners, and engineers. And it's, it's a meeting to discuss issues that they might see with code, how to make development more friendly, how, it's kind of up in the air. Any of these things can be brought to these stakeholder meetings. In fall of 2024, the stakeholders created a subgroup to discuss reviewing the driveway access standards. And out of that subgroup, clarifying driveway standards and addressing challenges with cross-access easement requirements were a topic that got moved forward through this development code amendment. So what we'll see in this proposal is the driveway standards don't change much, but they are separating the arterial and the collector's, collector's street standards, so it's easier to apply during development. They are reducing some of the spacing requirements for single-family residential uses, so those uses go away on the collector's streets, the lower-speed collectors. So, single-family dwellings won't have that big of a, or as much of a problem getting driveways on those lower-speed collectors. The cross-access easement standards, they are creating a tiered standard so that, based on the street classification and uses, certain things will be applicable. And those were all addressed, and our traffic engineer's here to answer any of those questions that you might have on it. We received no comment from the following agencies. Public Works was supportive of this amendment. Both of this amendment went through the Planning Commission Study Session, as well as the Active Transportation Advisory Committee Meeting. No comments came out of that. And then it also went before council briefings on October 5th, 14th, and 16th of this month. So everybody has seen this and reviewed it and has provided comments or no comments. The staff report addressed the findings and can find that all of the criteria is either satisfied or not applicable. And therefore, the staff is requesting the Planning Commission forward a favorable recommendation of DCA 25-170 to amend the driveway access standards. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Yeah. Any questions? Yes, sir.
So Liz, I've seen this a few times, so I'm starting to maybe understand it. The, I just wanted to make sure that there's some sort of like exception or whatever possibility in there. Like, I know if I'm reading it right, like, say you have a corner of property that's on an arterial or, or, yeah, an arterial and an arterial, or a collector and an arterial, or whatever it might be, but it's within those, like, I think it's 250 feet on an arterial and 150 feet on a collector. Say you've got a, a, a lot on a corner that meets those dimensions. I mean, how, you, if it's a legal lot, it has to have access. So do, I mean, we're not creating a situation where we're gonna not be able to provide access to somebody and, and create a problem for ourselves. I just, I, I get what we're doing. I just wanna make sure it has a, a means for us to make an exception if, for some reason, our, this change doesn't account for something.
So, section, well, it's in Article 4. It's in the section of the code that does allow exceptions to happen. So you could ask for an exception to the standards in the development code. But we've also clarified that if you do have, you could get access on a lower-order street if you do still have that higher-order street, corner lot problem.
But if it was, I mean, my, my understanding, and maybe I'm reading the code wrong, but I thought it said if you're, like, you can't have access within 250 feet of a street if you're on a major collector, or a major arterial, and you can't have access within 150 feet of the street on a major collector. Now, maybe I'm reading that wrong, but that's how I read it. So I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure. I guess what I, if I was Jay Harland, I would say, I don't wanna, I don't want my client to have to pay for an exception for something that the city created that had a flaw. So I, that's all I'm asking. And I'm not-
Yeah. I'll ask Carl McNair to come and clarify any of those questions.
Okay. No problem. Thanks. Carl, the answer can be, you're just wrong, Commissioner Pulver. You, you need to go over to fourth or fifth time, and then maybe you'll get it. That'd be okay, too.
Good evening, Commissioners. Carl McNair with the Public Works Department. Actually, you are correct, Jared, Commissioner Pulver. The, there is no exception in this code language. I, I kinda thought there was, and I was looking, and it's actually under some of the existing code language under local streets, where the closest edge shall be 35 feet from a intersecting street. And it says, if the parcel does not have sufficient width to meet this requirement, the driveway shall be located adjacent to the property line farthest from the intersecting street, and no authorization for a larger driveway shall be granted. So we could potentially add similar language into the, the 150 and 250-foot requirements, where I probably need to think about it a little bit to make sure we're not giving too much away, but where it's, where it's needed, we could add that type of language in.
Okay. Good, good catch. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
So the question I have then, 'cause I was actually gonna vote no based on that when I showed up tonight, is that something we can change now, or do you feel more comfortable working it through and then bringing it back? 'Cause, 'cause I don't want you to have to rush through it either. I want it to be done right, so.
Yeah. I would feel more comfortable working through it and bringing it back. 'Cause the, the other language is, applies to local streets, and it works well there. I just would wanna think through how we apply it to the higher-order streets.
Okay. Does that sound like we want to continue this?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. All right. So I think we can-
November 13th as well?
Yes. I was just looking.
Or is Carl more time?
So do we, Kelly, do we need to open the public hearing, or?
Um, you should, since we've, it's been noted as a hearing, you should ask if there's anybody that wants to come and testify. Sure.
Okay. All right. Well, let's do that. We will open the public hearing. And do we have anyone in the audience who would like to speak regarding this application? All right. I'm not seeing anyone, so.
So at this point, we'll leave the hearing open, and we'll continue to a date specific, or, specific date. So next meeting is November 15, or 13, and then December 11. There's only-
Very good.
So then the request would be to go to the next meeting, November 13.
Okay. All right. So we will entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to continue DCA-25-170 to the November 13th Planning Commission meeting, and the record is remaining open.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, Kaylee, can we have a roll call, please?
Jeff Thomas?
Yes.
David Colbertson?
Yes.
Larry Besko?
Yes, yes.
Rachel Bennett?
Yes.
Jim Wallen?
Yes.
Jared Pulver?
Yes.
Mark McHekney?
Yes.
We have seven yeses.
Thank you. The motion passes, so we'll see you on the 13th of November. Okay, moving on. Agenda item 50.6, DCA 25-199, a legislative amendment to amend Chapter 10 of the Municipal Code related to proportionate share for transportation improvements. The applicant is the City of Medford. The planner is Carla Angeli Palladino. And Carla, can we have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Commissioner. Carla Palladino with your Planning Department. So a few things. So we do have a new Exhibit A, which I had to provide to you, I'm sorry, at the last minute here at 5:30. We have been working with ODOT since yesterday. They provided a comment, Exhibit D in the record, prior to the report being issued. We heard from them yesterday saying that they still had some issues with the findings and the language. We met with them today, and they proposed some language, and we've kind of amended that language. So what's before you is some changes. My understanding in speaking with Mr. McNair is that he still would like to work through that language a little bit. Staff hasn't really had a chance to digest it past the 5:30. So at this point, I can provide the full staff report or just request the continuance, and we can do the whole, whole show next time.
I think that makes excellent sense.
Okay. So we would request a continuance to November 13th, please.
Okay. All right. Well, then, that's quick. Go ahead and-
Well, do we have the same situation as the previous one, that we need to open the hearing?
We should ask since it's been noticed, you should ask if anybody wants to testify.
Oh, okay. All right. Then we will open the public hearing. And do we have anybody that in, that wants to speak regarding this application? And we do.
That's not able to come to the November 13th meeting.
Make it quick. Oh, he'll be there anyway. Mike, on. Push the button. There we go.
It's always on when I come up here. Again, for the record, Jay Harland with CSA Planning with offices at 4497 Brown Ridge, uh, here at Medford. A couple things. One is, I would request copies of whatever that correspondence was with ODOT, 'cause I'm sort of, I guess, this has been worked on for quite a while, and like, I think overall, it's, it's kind of been being done by a memo is how we, it's been being done, and this would codify it, which I think is important. But overall, I think from a transportation CM point, it prevents, it creates a, it would formalize sort of a shift in the way it's been being done before to now, how it's been done recently, but it's not really in the code, which is- been done recently, but it's not really in the code, which is much better, because the, the pathway of doing it was, it was always a, the sort of, the first person through the gate, when, would basically benefit from an improvement, or whatever, and then the last person who tried to get through it, it's like, oh, you have to do everything. And this basically gets us out of that problem, and is a tremendous, it's been a tremendous problem, where you hit a couple bottlenecks, and sometimes they're, like, really far away from a project, and then all of a sudden, it's like, oh, you know, you either can't get the zone change, or you, I think the worst-case scenario is, sometimes what you end up doing is, on the private side, we go back and sort of revise down the intensity of the development over an intersection that isn't that close, and you're not hitting that, with that many cars, but it's like, I'm not gonna spend a million and a half dollars to fix this thing with that amount of trips. And then there's also some, you know, at times, some, the, the old way of doing it, I thought at times had some Nolan Dolan-type proportionality potential problems. I think the overall approach to this code goes a long ways to addressing those issues. And I don't think it's gonna be perfect going forward, but it's gonna be codifying this, I think is a big step forward in terms of, it's never gonna be perfectly fair, but making it somewhat fair between all the competing developers, and project timing, and all that kind of stuff. So, I think it's good, and I may be back, depending on what ODOT suggested the city change, which is the first I heard of that. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Do we have anybody else that wants to speak regarding this application? Okay, seeing no one, do we have a motion for consideration?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I move to continue DCA-25-199 to the November 13 Planning Commission Meeting, November 13, November 13, 2025, Planning Commission Meeting, and the record is to remain open.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Kelly, can we have a roll call on this motion?
Larry Busco?
Yes.
Jim Wallen?
Yes.
Jeff Thomas?
Yes.
Rachel Bennett?
Yes.
David Culberson?
Yes.
Jared Pulver?
Yes.
Mark McKechnie?
Yes.
We have seven yeses.
Thank you. Motion passes. See you on the 13th. Okay. Next agenda item, 50.7, DCA 25-199, consideration of a legislative amendment to Chapter 10 of the Medford Municipal Code to reduce the number of appointed commissioners from nine to seven on the Site Plan and Architectural Commission. Planner is Liz Hamblin. And Liz, can we have a staff report?
All right, we're on the, the final show.
Yeah.
Again, Liz Hamblin with the Planning Department, and we are gonna review SPAC Membership 2.0, Development Code Amendment 25-206. It's a Development Code Amendment to reduce the Site Plan and Architectural Commission voting members. We've already gone through the authority and criteria, and so let's go on to the history and analysis. So, back in May, the City Council approved the removal of our Licensed Landscape Professional requirement for SPAC, and at that meeting, they did direct us to revisit the appointment requirements. So some history on the, on the SPAC, between 1960 and 66, it went through from five voting members to seven voting members. They added licensed work, or Licensed Landscape Architect, and Licensed Contractor, and another at-large member. In January of 2006, they went from seven members to nine members with additional at-large memberships. And then, like I said, in May, they reduced it by removing the Licensed Landscape Architect and adding it to the at-large membership. So here we are. We are proposing to reduce it to seven voting members with the Planning Commissioner, a Licensed Architect, a Licensed Engineer, a Licensed Contractor, and then a total of three at-large voting members. This is Option A that was presented through many study sessions through SPAC, through Planning Commission, as well as City Council, and it was unanimously decided that Option A was the, the amendment to move forward. We received no comments from any of the agencies in public that we provided this to, and we've addressed the findings and conclusions on our staff report, and we can find that they have all been satisfied or not applicable. So with that, staff is requesting the Planning Commission forward a favorable recommendation of DCA 25-206 to reduce the number of positions for Site Plan and Architectural Commission. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you, Liz. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah. So, how many are seated currently on the commission?
There's currently one vacancy.
Is that an at-large vacancy?
Uh, it is now. It was the landscaper that was vacant, so it's an at-large position.
So how's the determination gonna be on who else is invited to no longer sit?
We'll look to see whose terms are expiring.
Oh.
So it may just be those that are expiring out.
Oh, okay. I would use attendance, personally.
Chair, sorry, I, I guess I, I'm making a bigger deal out of this, but I was reading over the minutes from SPAC when they discussed it, and I, Mr., so I don't know if this is just an error in the minutes, or if, if he actually said this, but I don't believe it to be true, but Mr. Bender said that the option C, the getting rid of SPAC, was, was a suggestion from the Planning Commission. I don't believe that to be true. I think it might have actually been council's suggestion. Do you disagree?
Oh, no, no, no. It was not our idea.
Okay. So I just, I guess I, I mean, we're not gonna change their minutes and anything else. I just want that to be of record, because I, that, I don't, I don't believe that to be true, and I don't want it to be...
I did make that very clear to them, that that was not, that was brought to us, and it was nothing that we suggested, or even pushed for whatsoever.
Okay. Thanks. So I just wanted to make sure that was on the record, anyway.
Okay. All right. If we have no other questions, we will open the public hearing. And do we have anyone in the audience who would like to come and speak on this application? Don't everybody rush forward at once. All right. Not seeing anybody. Any further comments from planning?
No.
Engineering, have any comments? Legal, have any comments?
Nope.
We will close the public hearing. And do we have a motion for consideration?
Mr. Chair, I finally get to read a full one. Based on the findings and conclusions that all the approval criteria are met or not applicable, forward a favorable recommendation to the City Council for adoption of DCA-25-206, per the staff report dated October 16, 2025, including all exhibits.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing any? Kelly, can we have a roll call, please?
Jim Wallen?
Yes.
Jared Pulver?
Yes.
Jeff Thomas?
Yes.
Larry Busco?
Yes.
Rachel Bennett?
Yes.
David Culberson?
Yes.
Mark McKechnie?
Yes.
We have seven yeses.
Thank you. Motion passes. All right. And that concludes tonight's public hearings. Moving on to item 60, Presentation of Reports, Transportation Commission, Mr. Pulver.
Yeah, so our last meeting was the joint study session we had with Transportation Commission, or with us and Transportation Commission, so I don't think I need to recap that.
Nope. Okay. Site Plan and Architectural Commission.
The last meeting we had was a continuance, so that's all.
All right. Moving quickly. Planning Department, Ms. Aiken.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Kelly Aiken with your planning department. Good evening, Commissioners. So, a couple things for you. First, I wanted to acknowledge that our Commissioner Bennington resigned his position on the, on the commission. So we do have a vacancy. That happened Monday, I think it was. So he is no longer seated, which is unfortunate. No more selfies.
Kelly is, is 26, like, do we have commissioners coming up?
Yeah, there are terms that expire every year. I can't...
Oh, every year?
Yeah, every year, there's terms that expire, yeah.
Okay. So we may or may not have some additional seats that we gotta figure out.
Yes, and there are, they, you know, they advertise every year, starting in September, October, so they're recruiting now for, for commissioners for the various bodies, so...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Let's see. We know that the downtown plan was adopted by City Council last week. Y'all didn't know that.
No.
I haven't seen you since. It was great. So congratulations, Ms. Palladino, for getting that done. That was a very heavy lift. And, extra added bonus, it won a statewide planning award.
Whoa!
From the Oregon Planning Association, so yes.
Well, congratulations, you guys.
Yes, congratulations to Ms. Carla. What else we have? Uh, upcoming business, study sessions, we don't have any business for your, for the 27th, for Monday's session.
Okay.
So we will cancel that. We do have business for November 13th, as you are well aware. We went from 7 to 11.
Whoa!
So, the, uh, uh-huh. This is what happens in November and December, because you only have one meeting, so they just get super, just bogged down. So eat your Wheaties, we'll make sure, we'll have a snack, anticipate a break. We'll bring snacks for you. So, anyway, so, so the, the November 13th will be a lengthy meeting, to be sure. I don't think there's anything hugely controversial on there.
But 11, nonetheless, 11 is...
A zone change, a subdivision, a name change, it'll be fine. It'll be fine. This'll be great.
But, and December is the exciting one, right?
December, right now, we only have, I think, two things scheduled, but one of them is Mountain Top, and that one will be, you will have some company in December. City Council, I mentioned the, the downtown plan was adopted. They also approved the GLUP amendment on Loser Lane at, just south of, south of Shurm's, south of West Main, for La Clinica. That was approved. Mm-hmm. And they also approved the street vacation. Finally, it took us forever to get Bellknap on their agenda, so that was finally done, too. Bellknap is at Paper Street, that's south of Garfield, by KFC, so that was finally resolved as well. Upcoming at their, next week, we have an annexation hearing, not next week, the week following, on November 5, an annexation. It's on Table Rock, south of Airport. And, let's see, what else? I think that that's all that I have for you, unless you have questions for me. Bring your Wheaties.
No.
Bring your Wheaties next meeting. All right. Thank you, y'all.
Thank you. Okay. Message and papers from the chair? Nothing from me? Remarks from the city attorney?
Nope.
Propositions and remarks from other commission members? Nope. All right.
Sorry, Mark, I know, you guys wanna get out of here. I do think you should think about, you know, so we had the hearing earlier, and the, I don't know if, I don't know if the issue is the major minimum access easement, or if it was about private drives and minimum access easements in general, or whatever, but I do think if it's something we want staff to look at, we should talk about it, because I think they can, and we can make recommendations to mount, I don't know if it'll go anywhere, but it, we can discuss it more...
From my perspective, it wasn't necessarily about a private versus an easement, it was the fact that I thought that we could do a minor versus a major, and however you want to be confused with that, and that that was really not given to us as an option. And then we were told, kind of, that tough, you have to vote yes, anyway. And I felt like there was other options that we could have looked at.
When I, I actually, I mean, I think Mr. Mansfield, even though he's not here anymore, is really right. Those things are fraught with issues, in my opinion, but I don't know that there's great solutions, either, so...
I was hoping that we could kind of minimize...
Minimize the number of people impacted by it. Yeah, I understand.
Well, and to my mind, it would be clear if it were only used as if there was no other option, which, in this case, it seemed like there were a couple of easy options, so...
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I think, and I think we start to veer into some territory of, like, I know we butt up against this reality that if it meets the requirements of the application, absent some extraordinary circumstance, we really do need to approve it. But, I think you're right, that reading into, that, that there are options, that this was like, an alternative, if nothing else is feasible, then, yes, you should approve it as a requirement. It kind of is walking that line pretty adequately of, we would have discretion, we'd like to see these other options, or at least to better understand why they were not pursued, so that we can at least feel confident in saying, you know, yes, this checks the box, if this is the best you can do, fine, begrudgingly, but yes. So I think having a clearer understanding of that would help us in this, in this particular type of scenario, scenarios like it.
I agree completely, because we had, the next public hearing we had after that had a public street with a cul-de-sac, and it worked. And to be told that this is the only way to do it, without some backup that says, we couldn't do it because of this, I mean, to me, it just seems like they were lazy. Okay? Any other comments? Nothing? All right. We are adjourned. 7:32.